She got her before me?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
What's up with that?
That's the harm of mine.
It's the new next one.
I don't want to take that chair.
It feels like...
What?
Did you sit in one?
Are they whoopee cushions?
I know.
You need to wiggle around.
I know, we need to switch. It's a change that we all... Exercise balls. Yes, you gotta roll. It's how. I started eating on Monday. By the time yesterday noon rolled around, I've had eighteen-four and a half hours in. I yesterday noon, and I left at like 3:30 or 4:00. So, I really have one. Hey, I got your point. More horrible.
All right. Tell Mr. Hall how we doing? I'm reading the order. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Quick announcement. In the continued interest of transparency in government, all attendees are reminded that the Suscano County Commissioners' meetings are now being video and audio recorded for documentation and posting for public review. Your attendance indicates your consent to such video and audio recording.
And where, and can you tell us where the cameras are?
They're in the room.
Where in the room? In that corner?
Item number four.
I make motion to approve item number four as listed on your agenda.
Are you happy with them the way they are?
Absolutely.
All right, I'll second. Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Greco to approve item four on the agenda through the minutes of April 22nd of 2015 meeting. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion under item number five is listed on the agenda. Recess, open the salary board.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren to recess the Commissioners' meeting and open the salary board. The salary board is open at 9:01. All present? Item number three.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the February 25th salary board meeting.
The attached here? Uh huh. Move 25 second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Greco to approve item three, to approve the minutes of February 25th, 2015 salary board. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Epstein.
An extension?
Move to April 6.
Motion to approve the minutes of April 6, 2015, special salary board meeting.
Okay, second.
Motion by Treasurer Bandic, second by Commissioner Jean Greco to approve item four, minutes of the April 2nd, 2015 special salary board meeting. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item five.
Make a motion to approve item number five as listed on your agenda.
Just wait a minute here. The way that reads, that is a general county secretary real estate clerk, and I don't believe that's what we intend. I believe that to be in the sheriff's office.
Right.
Is that my, is that correct?
That's what, yeah.
Yep.
Right?
Correct, should be in the sheriff's office.
Oh, no, that's right.
Per the recommendation.
That's not real estate clerk, that's, it's...
It's a real estate clerk and his office will do this.
Yes.
And I think I should say that so we're not creating a general.
Yes.
One, you know what I mean?
Yes.
Right.
So, could I amend my motion?
Yes.
Union position in the sheriff's office for secretary's law.
Normally on that, Democrat. Well, you're normally on that.
I got a motion, do I have a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Greco to approve item five with following change, to eliminate the full-time position of secretary and create the full-time union position in sheriff's office for the secretary of real estate clerk for 40 hours, 98 hours, six months probation, benefits for the collective bargaining. Questions or comments?
Yeah, hang on. Do they work 40 hours?
Yes. Some of, the new ones do.
Okay, one sir doesn't.
One doesn't, but any new ones coming in do.
Two will, the new ones coming in only.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Trying to, it says eliminate full-time union position and create full-time union position. Is that what you mean?
Yes, the current position is a, is a secretarial position. It's not being created as a secretary of real estate clerk. There's a change in the duties.
Oh, okay. And what is the name of the person? Who is it? Who's doing that job?
Um, right now, the new person hasn't been hired yet.
Oh, there's nobody right now?
Right, we haven't hired a new person in this position yet.
And then what will be their duties? Are they involved like with foreclosures?
They handle all the processing of the paperwork for the sheriff's department for the real estate sales.
Real estate sales through the sheriff's department?
Right.
So, nobody at this point? And did you have somebody or this is a whole new position?
Uh, there was a secretarial position in there before. That secretarial position's getting eliminated and this position's being created.
And so you have to hire somebody? Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number six.
Number six.
Assistant head, I just want to make sure we have this right. Okay, we're keeping a union by calling it assistant head real estate tax clerk as opposed to what appears to me to be a deputy chief assessor. You know what I mean? There's a difference.
Right.
And there's a big distinction that goes with that difference.
Right.
I want to make sure we're calling it the right thing for the duties they're going to perform.
Right.
I'm not sure the assistant, am I calling it an assistant head real estate tax clerk? I don't know if we're calling it the right thing.
What did you call him?
Deputy chief assessor.
Deputy chief assessor, the...
Deputy chief assistant.
Mary Knowley.
It's already a deputy chief assessor.
The RIS.
Right. This deals in the real estate side.
You know what I need by calling, what we're calling it.
Mm-hmm.
Are we sure that's what you want to call it?
That's what I went through the HR department.
Okay, motion to approve item number six that is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren to approve item six on the agenda, the full-time union position, to eliminate full-time union position of the real estate tax clerk and create the new union position of the assistant head real estate tax clerk, 40 hours a week at 9:80, six months probation for the benefits according to the contracts. Questions or comments? Yes, please.
Is this an open position as well?
This is a position that the current position's being eliminated and the new position's being created.
Is there somebody in line already?
No.
That's...
We have to hire somebody to get posted and we have to hire somebody. The current person that was doing the, the old job has moved on to a different job. So, it's a vacant position that's getting eliminated and new one created.
I have a question.
Yes.
When you call that you're eliminating the real estate tax clerk, is that the position named that was before?
Yes.
So, they're called, and who was that?
That was the person down in the...
The assessor's office?
The assessment office, yes.
You mean one of those women when you walk in?
Yes.
And they're called tax clerks?
Depending on their position, that's one of them was called that, yes.
Because I've never heard that term before. It's kind of unusual term.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Carry on.
I make a motion to approve item number seven as listed on your agenda. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Treasurer Bandic to approve item seven, create a full-time, six-month temporary switchboard operator, office assistant, 40 hours a week at 9:16, six months probation, no benefits, further recommendation of chief clerk. Questions or comments?
Yeah, I got a...
I have the same question I asked before.
Uh, the current person that was doing that, she's not on extended medical leave, so we need to replace that person with temporary until that person comes back.
It's that. Will that be done in the agenda or is this someone you still have to find?
Uh, it's going to be done in the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, a question.
I read this as a contradiction in terms. I see it dichotomy of diametrically opposed principles at work here, full-time and temporary.
Well, full-time is more than, is 40 hours a week.
Well, but we say 40 hours a week.
Right.
So, full-time means we're already, they're all going to be there and it's not temporary is the argument I make.
Temporary for six months.
Yeah, for six months.
So, should we say full-time or should it just read to create six-month temporary switchboard, blah, 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 40 hours a week?
If you'd like it to say that.
I would be, I think the full-time has to come out, for it to come out.
Okay, I'd like to amend that motion also.
I'll second it with the amendment.
Any other questions or comments?
Yes, I have a question about the title. It says switchboard operator. You actually have a switchboard operator? I thought you have a whole new phone system in here.
We still get phones that come to the, we still get calls that come to the operator. And they have other duties too besides just answering the phone.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great.
Motion approve item number eight.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Treasurer Bandic to approve item eight on the agenda, create one new union, full-time custodial position, 40 hours a week at 8:28 per hour, six months probation, benefits according to the contract. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
And nine.
Who's taking care of what's going on at the jail now with maintenance?
Uh, Raleigh. But Raleigh's, like, the service is just about done. We need to get people down there trained for all the new stuff that's down there.
So, Raleigh will be leaving?
And now they understand this will be leaving next year.
8:76, that's not much. Motion to approve item number nine as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Good, motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren to approve item nine on the agenda, to create one new union, full-time maintenance position for the correctional facility, 40 hours a week at 8:76 per hour, six months probation, benefits per the contract. Question? Yes?
The last two jobs, these have to be posted as well?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Can you explain what other things they have to do, additional work at the correctional facility for the maintenance position? What else is their duties and what's happening there that's additional?
Well, it's all the maintenance. You've got the heating, the cooling, all the electrical systems, all the fire systems, all the control systems in the control center, all the electric doors, electric gates, plus building maintenance itself, outside maintenance, all of that.
So, that rate seems a little low. Can you make it higher for this person? It sounds like a lot of duties for them and responsibility.
No, it's the salary that was, or the salary that was recommended. It complies with all the other positions that start in maintenance. All in favor?
Aye.
Any public comment on the salary board?
Motion to close salary board?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren to approve item 10 to close the salary board. All in favor?
Aye.
We are closed. 9:12. We are back to the Commissioners' meeting at 9:12. We're now at item number six.
Motion to approve item number six as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren to approve item six on the agenda, approve the cash disbursements, electronic payments. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So, carry on.
Make a motion to approve item number seven as listed on your agenda.
Second.
Motion to approve item seven by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Greco to approve the, and ratify the seminar requests and payments. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
And eight.
Motion to approve item number eight as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren to approve item number eight on the agenda except the resignation of Mr. Chapman from the Human Resources Department. Questions or comments?
Does this person have any other jobs in the county office building?
No.
This person is now no longer...
No longer county employee.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve item number nine as listed on your agenda.
Motion to approve item nine by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Greco to ratify the hiring of William Darrell of Alstead, the open full-time position of the assistant processing manager at the County Recycling, six-month probation effective April 29th, at rate of 8:76, 40 hours per week, further recommendation of the recycling coordinator. Questions or comments? Yes.
Is this a non-union position?
No, this is a union position.
And any updates on how the recycling plant's doing? Do you have any profit yet or is it still in the negative?
Um, right now, so far this year, it's still in the negative. It's a question whether in the last quarter, whether it'll be break even or become profitable.
And how was last year when it ended? Did it break even?
No, it didn't break even.
It was negative?
It was negative, yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, motion to approve item number 10, but let's keep the wording of this motion consistent with the motion we made in the salary board, i.e. take out full-time and stay 40 hours per week.
I'll second that.
I got a motion to approve item 10 by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren with changes, to ratify the hiring of Caitlin Williams of Friendsville to the open temporary six-month position of 40 hours a week for the switchboard operator, office assistant, 9:16 an hour. Questions or comments? Yes.
Is that the one we just talked about in salary board? So, you did find somebody and this is the new person?
Right.
Caitlin.
Right. All in favor?
Aye.
Item number 11.
Make a motion to approve item number 11 as listed on your agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Greco to approve item 11 to exonerate the tax claim bureau from collecting 20,000 taxes from 2014, amount of 9712 on the filing for the recommendation of Kathy Benick, tax claim director. Now, it's a one X partial. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Uh, motion to approve item number 12 as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Um, motion to approve item 12 by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren to approve the, sign the agreement between Suscano County and Harrington On-Site Drug Testing and Clark Summit beginning May 15th, 2015, and to be used as necessary, billed as used. Questions or comments? Yes.
So, this is what, for county or courthouse employees to be tested at random as far as urine and breath? Breath alcohol or urine drug?
Right, per the union contract, yes.
Now, is this something that you've been doing for a while?
Oh, yeah.
So, anybody can be tested who's an employee at random?
Well, under the, under the guidelines.
So, what kind of guidelines do you have?
I, you can meet with the human resources director and he can go over that with you.
Okay.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Public comment on the Commissioners' meeting?
I have, I hope it's not an extended question. We now have videotaped recording of the meeting. What stands as the official record of the meeting? The minutes that we get the week after or the video recording or pub?
It'll be the approved minutes. That's the standing record.
The written?
Right, the approved, that's the minutes that we approve at the meeting. That's the approved written record. Any other comment? All?
Answer her.
No, go ahead, take all, go ahead.
Why'd you point it out, a recycling center works good?
Well, we're still reviewing it. We did get some grants and we're applying for some more grants, so things are continuing to improve. We look at getting a new baler, we're looking at getting a new skid steer for the facility through the grants, and that's what we're working on now. Unfortunately, one of the issues with the skid steer, the state has changed the regulations on the requirements for using a skid steer indoors, and unfortunately, none of the manufacturers at that point have a machine that qualifies to work indoors, so we're still working on that.
And I'd also like to thank the Commissioners for having to do it again. 706, they, it's no different than the power over there.
Alan's worked on, he's worked on there for the last six months. He been running all over the country beating on them.
I'm meeting one of them like every other day now, in all parts of the county. I got another meeting Friday, I had a meeting yesterday, so continue to try and get it done.
If the minutes, the written minutes, which is really, again, a regurgitation of what happened the week before without public comment, without a phone call, are going to be the official record, then why did the Commissioners decide to have a video recording?
Just to give the transparency to the public so the public can view it at their pleasure.
Transparency?
Sure.
Thank you.
Yes.
And how much did the video equipment cost?
Couldn't tell you exactly. I know it was between $3,000 to $5,000 for the system.
So, you have video and audio?
Yes.
And where is it going to be posted?
On our webpage. There will be a link on the webpage.
And was wondering also, can you give us any other updates on the road conditions and what you've been doing the past week? I know you go to a lot of meetings. Or anybody else on the board here?
Continuing to work with Pendot, talked to the director out of Harrisburg. We have also had a meeting with the Farm Bureau and some of the township supervisors. They've invited the Secretary of Transportation up as well as all the elected officials to try and have a meeting with them to get some sense of urgency in the road repairs here. Did meet, talked with the director yesterday as to why 706 has not been paved, at least from the right aid into town where they've already got all the curbing done, and why they're waiting to get all the curbing done before they do that, so they're reviewing that. My understanding is this is apparently a litigation issue between Pendot and the contractor at this point, so that's another issue that they're trying to get worked out. So, as far as the other areas, 167, they're still working on getting the base repaired before they can mill and pave that. 706, they're still doing all the cross pipes, trying to get those replaced before they mill and pave that.
Oh, yeah.
Still no movement yet on getting Route 11 dug or the road from Demick to Hop Bottom. That's a disaster if I can't remember the number of that one off the top of my head. And also 92 going from Jackson into Suscano, it's a disaster at this point, and parts of 171. So, mostly, just about every road in this county is a disaster, and we're trying to figure out why Central and Lackawanna doesn't think that's a big enough emergency to get the roads repaired up here.
By any chance, did Cabot or any of the major gas company empty up any extra funds?
Yeah, my understanding from Pendot is the road work that's being done from Brooklyn to Hop Bottom on 167, Cabot is taking care of all that, and then Pendot is taking from Brooklyn forward.
Is that something that, is that out of the goodness, the kindness of their heart or they're, well, they have to? I got some numbers on that.
You got some numbers? Go ahead.
Cabot, I, boy, Bruce, I asked the exact same question you asked. Cabot has spent to date $44 million on county roads. They're spending $1 million currently fixing, what's the road going south?
167.
167. Some of that $44 million, they were required to spend, half of it they did because they indicated it was the right thing to do, they didn't have to spend it. Because I asked the questions, how many millions have the other, all the gas companies spent on the township roads, the dirt roads? It's tens of millions more. Because all the dirt roads they've been on, they spent a lot of money, did a lot of work on them, and they are in better shape now than they have ever been.
Well, I mean, it's very nice of them to fix the mess they created.
Yeah, I understand, I understand. But there was always a debate, you know, as to whether they had to do it. But they didn't. They've spent a lot of money fixing roads.
And I think the other thing that needs to be added to that too, if you go to other counties that have as much truck traffic as we have, their roads are not in the condition that our roads are. Our roads are far worse.
So, what's the difference?
Well, I think the difference is, is the construction of our roads, how our roads were put in originally, and how they've been maintained the last 30 years.
No base.
There's no base in our roads.
So, is Bradford County better than us?
Absolutely.
Because they were built originally better.
They were built originally with more base and stuff?
Yeah.
Correct.
All?
Well, we got after Cabot last summer when they were having too much heavy traffic on my road and doing some things to it, and they said, well, don't worry, we're bonded, we got to fix it, do anything.
What was the brand of the, the motion?
Well, no, I'm not done, not done. I'd like to know also, with all those millions that they spent, then it's still the worst that we've ever had, right? At this point. And then also, I'd like to know, I spoke with Robert Stoudt, and he said that we can, as far as right-to-knows, I'd like to clear it up with you to make sure I understand Robert Stoudt correctly. He's the right-to-know officer, and he said that we can get any right-to-knows, I mean, we can get any information that's public without a right-to-know in this county if we want to. So, is that true?
Yes, that's true. If someone wants information that's public record, all they need to do is come in and ask for the information. Now, if the person has the information available at that time and they can get it, access it readily available, they will give you the information at that time. If not, and you will give them the information, they'll take and get the documentation and send it to you. Or if it'll take, if what you're asking for needs to take some time to, to hold down, then they'll still get it to you. So, yeah, it's not a problem. But if you file a formal right-to-know request, then it has to go through the formal right-to-know process.
Now, what if we're told we have to do right-to-know from certain officers, as I've been told, even those public information, should I then contact you and complain?
No, you should contact the chief clerk and talk to the chief clerk.
Talk to Robert Stoudt?
Yes.
Or Steve Stoudt? He goes by both names?
His real name is Robert.
Real name is Robert?
Yes. Do you have a question?
I do. In, in the past few weeks, I've had to call into the phone system, and some of the extensions are, they don't work. I'll get through the main.
You're right.
I mean, how much did we spend with Guyet Communications? Just can we get a discount on the hookups?
No, we're still, well, as, when you change technology and upgrade the new technology, when you're replacing the entire system, there are still some bugs in the system that have to be worked out. I was on conference call yesterday with Guyet and all the individuals responsible, and they are working to resolve the issues that are still plaguing the courthouse as far as their phone issues. But they have ensured me that by Friday, they will have the situation figured out as to why we're still having some issues. They have a plan in place to correct it, so it operates correctly.
As per the information from this gentleman about the roads not being done right the first time, the foundations, was there a study done before Cabot and Chesapeake and all the rescating, and we knew the hundreds, not millions of tons that would be rolling by and causing this destruction? Did we, did we do a study? Did anyone do a study?
As far as my knowledge and talking with Pendot, there was never a study done.
I wonder if a study had been done, which, which would have said probably, you're going to have a lot of problems, we would have gotten a higher impact, a higher number on the impact fee.
No, not one to change that. The impact fee is driven by the legislation, and that's entirely different than Pendot and the roads. The issue right now with Pendot and the roads is that, again, I feel that Pendot, again, doesn't realize where Suscano County is, and the funding that comes to Suscano County does not adequately, adequately support the work that needs to be done.
Well, I don't, I hear James May talking about it every morning, so he knows where it is.
And who's James May?
One of the head honchos.
And what is the name of the director that you spoke to in Pendot that you're talking to?
I'll get his full name from you, for you.
You can't say it right now?
Well, not off the top of my head. I have to, I want to make sure I get the correct spelling for you.
Okay, then do, can you verify, did you, were you able to verify that 220,000 number of trucks that go up and down 167 from Hop Bottom to Montrose in one year? Were you able to verify that?
No, that was just the information I received from the gas company and from Pendot both.
And who in Pendot's gave you that information?
That came from their marketing department.
And do you know who?
I would have to get you the gentleman's name.
Okay, if you could. I'd like to talk to them. Thank you.
Any other question?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned at 9:28. Good morning, good morning. So, here we have the Suscano County construction season for 2015. So here we have the Susquehanna County construction season for 2015, the map of what Pendott's supposed to be doing this year, and it's broken down into different sections. The first section, of course, is Department Forest Surface Improvements. Now, all these sections here, what this means is, it's basically oil and chip. So basically, they're chipping these roads is what they are.
So this is surface improvements, and these are all the roads here?
Yeah.
And how many do we have right there?
Well, there's...
What do you think?
There's eleven roads here. So if you look on the map, of course, you got over north of Oakland, you got a small section here on 1023.
And that's all the green lines?
And that's the green lines, that's going to be oil and chip. And then you got 1019 coming off 92 down into Steinbeck Corners.
Okay.
And then you got another section from Brushville over onto 492.
Okay.
And then down in here, you've got a couple spots over here by Demick Corners going up onto 92, this is over by Berman's Collision Center here.
And these are all state roads, of course?
These are all state roads. And then, of course, you come back over this way, you got the circle around Hart Lake, you've got a little bit of section down here, south of Alfred, going down toward Brooklyn, and then you've got Williams Corner, what, these are all basically, a lot of them are dirt roads and basically old paved roads. And then you got a section over here off of Watcher's Corners coming up and the bottom side of 706. Then you got one last big section over here, come out of Lot and running down through West Auburn, which will be oiled and chipped.
And that's Route 367?
367. So those, there's a total of thirty-six point seven-six miles of oil and chipping that's supposed to occur this summer.
So it's by this summer, that means this, it's happening this summer?
Yeah, it's already, they've already ordered materials and getting ready to do them, and so the first thing they do is, they take in crack seal and fill in any big holes, and then they start working on the chipping, oil and chip.
Now, are you saying this should be done by the end of the summer?
This is all supposed to be done by the end of this year, before winter sets back in.
Before winter, so that could be, what, October, November?
Right, right. So they'll go from road to road to do it, and, you know...
But that still means that we have to drive in these roads for several months.
Right, absolutely. Now, these roads here...
That's a tough scene.
Yep. Now, these roads here are surface improvements, and these, here are ones that they're doing absolutely ripping the tops off, repaving them, putting in drainage, redoing the whole thing. So you've got several sections here, you've got like, of course, 29 in Main Street and Montrose, which is right over here.
What do we have, about ten of them there, maybe?
Yeah, we have, and some of them...
The surface means, means a whole new surface, new blacktop?
Whole new surface, blacktop, all that.
The whole works?
The whole works, and drainage.
And drainage?
Right. So you can see on here, here's a section from South Gibson, basically at the Lenox exit off 81 going up to Fiddle Lake Road. Now, this road's all but, was prepped last year, so now this year, they've just got to go back in and redo the surface, and then this road will be completed.
I wonder how that road looks now, whether there's potholes?
There's a few potholes, it's not too bad, but there are a few potholes, and they'll fill those, and then put the new surface on, and they'll be taken care of.
And that can be done again by the same time period, or what's...
Yes, all this is getting done this year.
Before winter, by four October?
Before October, yes. Then you've got this section up here going through Thompson, if you've been through Thompson lately, it's pretty rough through here, and it goes from the, from the triangle here, over through Thompson, and then north on 171 up until the North Jackson Cutover. And then there's a little bit of work here in Susquehanna, if you come off 92, 92 going down in, and over in Oakland side, it's very rough through here, so that's all getting redone this year, too. And then the big sections, of course, are 706 is getting done from the New Milford, from the summit, all the way to Montrose, to Tiffany Corners, where they stopped last year.
Right.
And then from Montrose, all the way down over to Rush, that section's being done. Now, they've already started these, and what they're working on already on these two sections is putting new cross drains in, because the pipes in the road are old and they're collapsing. So all the drainage is getting fixed now, and then the next step will be to grind in the pave. And then we also have the 167, which is a road you're very familiar with, which is one of the worst roads in the county.
Yeah, if not the worst, too.
Right. 167 is getting done from Hop Bottom all the way to Tiffany Corners. And they've already started this, they've already started doing, again, the drainage work on this, getting the cross pipes in, then once they get the cross pipes in, they should start grinding. I have seen that they've already got the big milling machines down and start grinding up the blacktop.
And then what do they do with that? They fill the holes, or what's that?
Well, what they'll do is they'll grind up the blacktop, they'll fill, fill any bad spots, and then they'll take and put, come back in and put the new top on. And then 706...
And these roads are staying open meanwhile? Nobody's closing these roads?
Yeah.
Because some of these roads, they should be closed, like 167?
Well, what they'll do is try to main, because you have fire and rescue that has to get on these roads, so they won't close them, they'll try and keep them so that fire and rescue can get down through them.
Well, then just let them through, so they can fill the...
706 from Montrose to Rush, again, I said that one's already being worked on, that'll finish that section of road, and of course, that's extremely bad, too. And then there's a small section of 267 coming up here, that's getting redone also. So those are the major road improvements, and then you go to the next section, which is...
Let me take a photo of just the, and how many miles is that?
And that's four, almost forty-five miles of road.
And do you have enough workers this year? Do you have enough funds, or is the same usual tight budget?
Well, the funds, yep, it's a tight budget, but the funds have been allocated, and most of this stuff, all of this stuff, the, 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 um, surface improvements, all that is contracted out.
And this is all state funds?
This is all state funds.
Now, are you getting the same amount of state funds or more since we have Governor Wolf?
Right now, the amount of state funds has gone up, but the problem we're running into, and I'll show you in the, in the PowerPoint I have for you, the federal funds have dropped off drastically. So basically, what's happening is, we're getting more state funds, but the state funds is filling the hole that the federal funds have left us.
So we're kind of even?
It's still not growing, you know, it's still a big issue. And the Act 89 that they passed last year, it takes at least two to three years for all that big revenue to come in from the additional gas tax and all of that, so...
And what kind of tax is that, that Act 89?
That's when they increased the gas tax last year, the legislature did, to help them.
In increments or something, was it?
Yeah, it's in increments, but what it is, is it takes time for that gas tax to get collected, and then turned into revenue, and then brought back. Now, the other, next big one that's going on, of course, is bridges.
Bridges, right.
You know, right now, we've got five bridges in the county that are slated for some major work done on it, these are replacements. And you'll see here, there's some of them P3 on them, and they're called P3 bridges. Now, P3 bridge, what that is, it's a quick replacement bridge. So what they do is, they come in and they close the road, and they work on it 24 hours a day until the bridge is done. So some of these bridges, they've been able to do within two to three days.
Wow, that's pretty fast.
So, so that's what they're looking at. So bridges, you've got one up here in the Thompson area, off 1007, which is a state route. You've got one down here in Clifford, down here by 2008 and 2012. You've got one at the Gibson, right here between 547 and 848, that needs to be replaced. You've got one in New Milford here, that's north of New Milford, and that's by School Road there, by Old Route 11. And then you've got another one that's over here on Forest Lake Road, and that's always been a problem, this bridge here on 267, and that one's getting replaced.
Okay, so that's going to be all before winter?
That's all going to be before winter. And then, of course, we also still have some roadway better improvements, and what these are, a lot of these are slides, that they're going to be working on this year, and some improvements, like up here on...
What's a slide? What does that mean?
A slide is where the road's not stable, it keeps sinking.
Oh, okay.
So like going into Susquehanna on 92, just as you're coming down the hill, there's a spot there that's a slide, and the road keeps sinking, so they're going to work on getting that shored up. Over on 171, on the other side coming out, going toward Great Bend, there's a slight area there that keeps sinking, so they're going to fix that. You've got another one that is out on 492, they've got a bad spot there that they're going to work on and try and stabilize that. You've got another one over here, this is Liberty Park Road, going out of Halsted, going over toward Snake Creek Road, to fix that one, that's actually down the one lane right now, got so bad. And then you've got the two on 29. Now, these have already started, this one on 29 up here, the Army Corps of Engineers is down moving the creek back over to where it should be to try and re-stabilize the banks and stuff.
Yeah, that's always been a problem, though.
Yep, so they're already working there. This is the one in Franklin Forks, and of course, and one thing I didn't mention, 29 north here gets done between Franklin Forks and Montrose this year, too, gets resurfaced.
Okay, that's good.
So that road, of course, is horrible, needs to be redone, so that's going to get done. And then, of course, we've got the whole project through Montrose that's getting done right now with Leeward, they're already starting back up now to work on that, so that'll get done also.
Now, that's been a project that was being worked on last year, now this year, so we're talking almost like two years?
It's about three years.
It's a three-year project?
Yeah, last year was the second year, this is the third year on it. So, three years, and of course, I had a lot of drainage work, had to put a lot of drains in, a lot of basins in, and all of that.
Now, how do these roads handle all the truck traffic, industry truck traffic while they're being worked on? Like, 706 has been worked on now two years or so, and meanwhile, all the trucks go through, it's a main artery.
Right.
So doesn't that sort of break down whatever has been fixed, or...
Well, it doesn't really break it down, because the base they're putting in, they're putting in a good base on these roads now, but the problem you do have is, because of the amount of traffic, it does, it does take longer to get these roads done, because there's so much traffic on them. And I think the number, and I'm not positive, but I think the number on 167 last year, I had heard, 167 last year had like two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand trucks on it.
Well, just in one year?
In one year.
Two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand trucks, they were able to count, they must have had a counter?
Right. They must add something, but that's what they figured, it was about two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand trucks that were in that road last year.
Now, I understand also, none of these roads, as far as what you might know also, are bonded by the industry?
Right, none of these roads are bonded. You won't get into your bonded roads until some of the, well, some of the...
I heard it's, it has to be four numbers.
Right, some of these, like the 1012s, 1019s, a lot of these are bonded.
But like the three-number ones?
The three-number ones, 167...
And the two-numbers?
And the two-numbers, 29s, they're not bonded.
And those are the main arteries that are used by the industry?
Right.
So are they contributing in any way to these roads? Is it just through, what, a gas tax, or what would it be?
Well, there's the fuel tax that they contribute to, but one thing that did happen is, the one gas company is going to take and do the road repair from Hop Bottom to Brooklyn. So the state's not paying for this section here, one of the gas companies is paying for that, which allowed the state to be able to finish this whole road instead of just doing a section of it. Because originally, they were just going to do a section, but now they can do the whole thing, because the gas company's going to...
And have they started? Did they say when they're going to do it?
Yeah, this road has already begun. They're already putting all the drainage in, ripping it up, and they've got the milling machines down and start grinding it all up.
And then do you have a cost per mile? What would the cost like, even for the gas company to repair that road?
Well, I don't have, I don't have it, but I could probably get that for you, but here's what I've got for you, I've got a little bit of a PowerPoint for you, and this I'll give you to take with you. Our district is District Four, which covers Pike, Wayne, Susquehanna, Wyoming, Lackawanna, and Luzerne Counties, so there's four counties. And right now, there's two-hundred-and-twenty-one municipalities, there is almost four thousand miles of state highway, which is about seven point, or seven thousand nine hundred lane miles. The interstate, there's a hundred-and-eighty-four miles of interstate, and we've got little over two thousand bridges that are eight footer bigger, that are state-owned. Total employees in that, in that is eight-hundred-and-six, two-hundred-and-sixty-two at the district office, and there's six maintenance offices with five-hundred-and-forty-four employees.
This is Pendott?
And this is Pendott. And then the Act 89, which is what I was talking about, Act 89, which was passed a year ago, is your Bridge Bundy Program, risk-based bridge postings, to reduce the postings on those, local and dirt gravel road programs to help with those, traffic signals, weekend moves for oversized loads, utility costs...
And what does that weekend move mean?
Weekend moves, they're looking at moving the oversized loads on weekends, you know, whether to move them on the weekends or not move them on the weekends, depending on, you know, time of year and the traffic.
And then what about, don't they move them during the week? So they're allowed during the week?
Right, they are allowed during the week, that's when they mostly do them, is during the week.
And is there a certain time period? I heard they have to be out of here before a certain evening?
Right, they are, most of their permits are structured, so they, they're daylight hours and certain times of the day. They're looking at the seventy mile an hour speed limit again for Interstate 81, and of course, they did come up with a five-dollar optional fee for everybody's registration to help pay for things, but our county elected not to do it. I think there was only one or two counties in the state that elected to charge everybody additional five dollars in the registration tax.
Okay.
So this is the projected right here off Act 89, currently in 2014, roads and bridges, six-hundred million dollars. They're looking at, you know, the year, five-year estimate, it's going to go up to about 1.3 billion.
Wait a second, from 2014, it was six-hundred million?
Right.
The budget for the roads and bridges?
Right.
And now it's 1.3?
Right, now they're saying it's going to increase to 1.3 billion, from this Act 89 revenue that's going to come in.
That's the revenue that's coming in?
Right.
That's coming in, so there's extra revenue?
Right. Then, public transportation, of course, we don't have that here, but there's 207 million, of course, we do have our, our rehab busing that does get subsidized out of this for public transportation.
Now, this is the state, you mean, this is from the...
This is, this is all for, this is all for the state, yes.
This is the whole state, not just District Four?
Right, not just District Four. So let's get into District Four a little bit. So rapid bridge replacements, so our district, District Four, there's ten that are on early completion bridges that are, that are being done, there's nineteen remaining to be done, total of twenty-nine on the rapid bridge replacement. And that's bridges that are going to be replaced, working 24 hours a day, shutting the bridges down.
For like, three days or something?
Yeah, yeah. This is your MAP 21. MAP 21 is your federal funding, and that's what I wanted to show you. If you look at the, the effects on, you know, Pike, Wayne, Susquehanna, and Wyoming Counties, you know, in 2003, we were getting twenty-one thou, twenty-one million...
Twenty-one million?
For all those counties, and 2017, you know, stopped, dropped down to nine million.
Well, next, 2015, about nine million.
Right, nine million, and it's projected to stay there. One of the roads that used to be on Act 21 map is the federal highway system, and basically what it is, is a map of the United States, and they mark on it the roads that are part of the federal highway system, like Interstate 81, Interstate 80, and US 11 used to be a, on the federal highway maps on 21. But now, on the new maps that just came out, US 11 no longer is on it from Scranton to the state line. So that whole section of road, which used to be Act 21, MAP 21 is no longer on MAP 21. So that federal funding doesn't come for that road anymore.
You mean, no federal funding?
Right, not for that road. Right, not for that road.
Wow, so then it has to be covered under what?
Then it goes under the state.
Just state?
Yep.
Okay, so the state has to cover the difference, then?
The state covers the difference. So, that's statewide in district. This is projected lettings. Lettings means jobs put out to, to be done statewide in district. There's 2.4 billion statewide lettings is what was put out, and that's statewide. In our district, there was 80 projects at 280 million that was put out, and that's all of District Four.
And does that include roads and bridges?
That includes everything.
Everything?
And there's 44 bridges, 11 are, 33 are rehab or replacement, and 11 are preservation. There's some stuff in Pike County, of course, and the South Valley Parkway.
Where's South Valley Parkway?
That's down in Luzerne. District project lettings, there's 11 slide corrections, and most of those are in Susquehanna County. There's two fiddle paving, that's south, and a lot of this is the bridge washing, they're supposed to, the new bridges is to wash the bridges off, get the calcium and the salt off them from the winters, and the guide rail maintenance. A lot of, you know, you've seen the guide rails on the highways and every place, a lot of them beat up, they've got to get them replaced.
Right, people crashing, or trucks crashing into them.
Right, and they're also...
What about salt? Are we still using salt on our roads?
Yes, and I'll show you a slide on that shortly. So in District Four, there's 2,078 bridges that are greater than eight feet. 410 are structurally deficient. Now, structurally deficient means, you know, there's still, basically, the weight reductions on, they're, they're still driving across them. But in 2007, we had 23.8% of the bridges were structurally deficient. Today, or 2014, is only 20%, so they are improving and getting them done. And, but they are, got to fast track now, and getting a lot of these bridges replaced. So there's basically 7.3 million square feet of deck area on all these bridges, a million square feet of structurally deficient deck area. There's 76 posted bridges in District Four, and there's right now seven closed bridges in District Four. And the only one I know of right now in Susquehanna County is the one down by Rush.
That's, that's closed, in Rush?
Right, right. This is basically the rapid bridge replacement. These are all the bridges in Susquehanna County that are on the rapid bridge replacement, that are going to get replaced this year and the next couple of years.
So what do we have, four, H, 12?
12 of them. And then the next slide here gives you the detail on it. Like this one here is New Milford Township, we're going over Salt Lake Creek. This one is scheduled May of 2017 to be completed before January of 2018.
So they still have a ways to go?
Right.
They've got another year or two before they start?
Right. So these right here, like this one right here is the Stone, Stone Street Creek. This is the one over on 267 that's scheduled to be done this July.
Started, yeah.
Started. And the reason why you got such a big variance in time here is it's got to go out the bid, depends on how long the bids get back. But again, these are rapid replacements, so they'll work on them 24 hours a day till they're done. It won't take that many days to complete them. The other one's in 15, is, this is the other one here over in Thompson Township, and that one's going to start in June. And then you've got this one here on Clifford Township, which is also June, so those are the ones right now that are scheduled...
So that, that would mean they're closed down for two or three days, no traffic through there?
Right, no traffic through there. So it's important, you know, we've got to make sure EMS and our emergency services and 911 and everybody knows about it.
So this will be after school, maybe, too, so we don't have to worry about buses?
Right, that's why you saw the dates, they're, they're, you know, late, when summer's here, and don't have to worry about the school buses. So these are the winter, winter expenditures. So this is what District Four spent last year in the wintertime to maintain the roads. And in 2014, it was $30 million.
30 million, yeah.
And you can see what it was in 2013, it was only 26. 2012, it was 20 million. 2011, it was only 12 million, it wasn't a bad winter.